Welcome to Cut to the Chase with Rob Chase. Brought to you by the inland northwest report dot com. Alternative news and opinion for the inland northwest. And now here's your host, Rob Chase.
Hi, this is Rob Chase with Cutting to the Chase. Brought to you by inland northwest report dot com. An alternative news source for the inland northwest. Today, our guest is Steve Corker. Steve Corker has been a city councilman for a couple of terms. He's been here in Spokane since nineteen seventy. He's kind of one of the city elders, you know, you might consider. And he's got a very big background besides Spokane. I think what's especially of interest to me, we'll start out with this, is that Steve had as a teacher in Stanford, Alexander Kerensky, who was actually head of the first Soviet government in between the czar and Lenin. So let's cut to the chase and talk to Steve.
Okay. He was a kind of an inspiration to me because when I was at Stanford, it was right during the height of the Cold War. And he was giving a lecture one day on that period of time that he had the actually head of the government was the prime minister. And he had also served as the attorney general, the minister of justice, the minister of war. And he talked about democracy. He talked about his frustration that that transition didn't take place and that he had failed in setting up a more democratic government. But there was one story that really I'll never forget. He talked about as a youth, reading American literature, and he had read Uncle Tom's Cabin. And he started to cry. Tears came to his eye. And he was talking about that that period of American history, how sad it was enslavement and this sort of thing. And that was so interesting to me because, you know, he was a communist, or I thought at that particular time, because I really were familiar with his background. But that formed a bond. And I was a college student in need of money, and he hired me to work in his garden. And so on Sundays, I would go to his house and we'd work out in the yard. And he would talk about Russia, talk about Russian history. He would bring out big speakers and play Russian music and Tchaikovsky and Mozart ski and Prokofiev. And the music was just powerfully inspirational. He always gave me a book to read and Tolstoy and Dostoevsky and Turgenev. And I was a romantic at that time. And he taught me to have an appreciation for the Russian art, for the culture, for the people, and separate from communism. And that just created desire to one day go to Russia. And for a variety of reasons, because of the Cold War, I couldn't get a visa and go to Russia until nineteen eighty-eight. And I was able, from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and one, to probably spend a total of about twenty months working in Russia and had a chance to to really understand the people, the culture, the music, and separate it from the government. But he was kind of an inspiration for me at the height of the Cold War, that the people of Russia were separated from Stalin, the tragedies that had occurred. And it was something I never forgot. And I wish you were alive today and I could tell him about the experiences I had in Russia.
Did he give you a Boris Pasternak to read?
Oh, he gave me-
Doctor Zhivago?
Everything.
I'd be curious what he thought of the film.
And I loved the literature. In fact, I was able to go to Turgenev's home. And he was a hopeless, wonderful romantic, and he wrote beautiful love stories. And he built this beautiful garden. And he would open it up for weddings. And he would admire these beautiful young women coming in, their wedding gowns and everything. And he would form relationships based on scholarly works. And he was just a wonderful, hopeless romantic. And that was the inspiration, he said, for a lot of his literature and his writing.
Well, Russia, it seems like the nineteenth century, you just think of Russia, you think of color, like the splendid uniforms, the army's war and Faberge eggs and the domes, you know. But then it went, you know, under Stalin. It was just all I can think of is gray.
There was a kind of a dark period, and it affected the arts because the arts were really directed to fulfill state purposes or government purposes.
What they call tractor art.
But when you think about the great Russian composers, the ballet, and one of the things I remember about Russia is the audiences that would go for the symphony and for ballet. And a third to half of the audiences were filled with young people. The tremendous interest in the arts. And I wish we had that same commitment by youth in this country today.
Well, I heard that one out of three ballets performed is the Nutcracker. Russian ballet.
Yeah, but probably in this country. But anyway, it was, he was a mentor at a time that taught me to separate people from politics, to separate art from government. And it's a lesson that that has helped me in politics and in my life and made me more open minded as I've traveled around the world.
And what amazed me about Kerensky was he was so young. I think he was thirty-one. Maybe he worked a short period of time for the czar before all this actually happened. But he had his own ideas, I think. And the thing about Russia is it went from serfdom, skipped capitalism almost, and then went right into communism.
The anger, the anger at the exploitation of quote unquote masses was something that really didn't allow him to move the government into kind of a middle road. And that, he often said he had more time. And I reflect on that. When I look at what happened in the late eighties and early nineties with Gorbachev and Yeltsin, that if Gorbachev had had more time, if if we had given the Russian government more time to transition, if Gorbachev had served for eight to ten years, whether today's Russia would be different. Yeltsin was not the man.
Well, Yeltsin was an alcoholic a lot of the time, wasn't he?
And but the other thing is, and this is something I'll never understand, we had a double standard with Russia and with China. We imposed on China, I mean, on Russia because of the Cold War, standards of open government, freedom of the press, religious freedom, things that that we kind of begged with China. And we basically told Russia, you've got to do it overnight. And that, to me, that kind of shutting the door on the ability to Russia to evolve is what provided the environment for someone like Putin to come in.
Well, let's put communism over here. Russia and the Russian people, you know, the party was, there's a famous picture, I think, showing a little guy with handcuffed to a great big guy who was, you know, the people of Russia. And the party itself was so small compared to the general masses. So finally, they woke up and did overthrow.
And the other thing, you know, they had created such a bureaucracy in the sixty-plus or almost seventy years of communism, that the only entrepreneurs were basically the crooks, the black market. And they're the ones that basically moved into the quote unquote market, free market environment, basically exploited the government of a lot of its assets. And you basically had probably some of the most undesirable people take over and control government. And I think that's part of the problem of Russia today. They've got the oligarchs, the crooks that are exploiting the masses.
Well, they are friends, of course, in World War Two. But then, you know, they've always, it's always since I was a little kid, it's been posed as a threat, you know. We always grew up thinking someday we'll see a mushroom cloud and, you know, maybe because of Dr. Strangelove. It's always seemed like for the first time in history, we were on a very splintered thread. You make the wrong move and this this could actually happen. But seeing Russia as a threat, I mean, they've got, what, twelve time zones? It's spread out. And actually, a GNP is less than Italy. So but yet we pose them as like this, still even today, this giant threat.
You know, I don't think Americans could appreciate how unique United States and our ability to evolve. We were free of external threat for a hundred and sixty years. In fact, the biggest threat we had after the Revolutionary War was our civil war ourselves. And I've often said to my Russian friends, if if America had instead of the Atlantic Ocean, Japan, and instead of the Pacific Ocean, Germany, and had Sweden or the Persians, Russia was constantly fighting off external threats. America was allowed for a hundred and sixty years to evolve this democracy, the agrarian, the institutions. We could self-correct. We could deal with slavery. We could, we really didn't have to worry about the world until the Second World War. And Russia didn't have that. And that just forced them to be untrusting of foreign powers and created a whole different type of synergy. And that perspective, I think, people forget when you look at why Russia is why they are and why America is what we are.
And Well, I think it's our constitution, you know, our rule of law, with that maybe the Protestant Reformation coming into, had a lot to do with it. That's been a lot of thinking outside of the box that happened. But so I think our constitution and Bill of Rights is one thing, and our founders. I don't think we'd ever get a room full of those type of people together again. But geographically, we got a, you know, Canada and Mexico are of any threat to us. And then you got the Pacific and the Atlantic on either side. So we kind of were isolated. We didn't have to worry about those external threats.
The other thing I remember, my brother, sixteen years older, went off to the Second World War. And I remember him coming back and talking about how he had bonded with the Russians, unlike with the British or the French. And when a battle would occur or something would happen, they'd kind of go over to the British or the French, shake their hands, and they'd go back to their camps with the Russians. They'd party, they'd drink, they would dance, they would celebrate. And my brother came back and said, you know, in some ways, I felt I had more in common with the Russian soldiers than I did with the British and French. And when I had the chance to go to Russia myself, I found that my ability to bond, that we had so many things in common, not the politics, but just the life, the culture and the people. And that is something that still bonds me to Russian society, the people, even today.
What do you think of Russia now, then, with Putin?
Well, I think it's a different type of exploitation. I think the oligarchs are not providing the type of leadership that Russia needs. The economy is, I mean, the economy is less than what the economy of California. And they have the resources of the world. I mean, when you look at the mineral resources and the things that are, society is going to niche in the next, you know, two hundred years, Russia has unbelievable resources that could enable that society in a more open, if it were more open, to have greater economic success. And it won't happen under people like Putin.
Now, you had a good mentor in Kerensky. You know, him being like this, one of the most earth shaking events that have ever happened politically in the world within a few years. But you've been involved in Spokane County politics. You were city councilman for a couple of years, and you've been here since nineteen seventy. You knew the city fathers back then, you know, like Joey August and King Cole and some of those guys. Was Expo Seventy-four, was that a good thing, do you think?
Oh, I think it was great. I think it took, it made Spokane more cosmopolitan. It exposed Spokane to the world. And it changed the psyche, it helped education. No, I think it was a real game changer as far as the city is concerned.
So looking back, what went right, what went wrong about Spokane, you know, since you've been here?
Well, you know, it's, the thing I love about Spokane is its size. It's big enough to have a symphony orchestra, great hospitals, great institutions. It's small enough that you can get almost anywhere you need to go in forty-five minutes. That's one of the reasons I left New York City, and because I wanted to raise my family in a city this size. It's big enough that not everybody knows everything, what you do, but you can still walk down the street and see familiar faces. It provided a great educational opportunity for myself. And again, I love the seasons. And I, we don't have to deal with the maelstrom of the West Side. I was born in Portland, Oregon. The reason I didn't go there, I didn't like the rain. And so, you know, the geography, the climate, the size of Spokane is something that's never made me regret living here or having my children be raised in this community. From the political point of view, you know, it's, there are a couple of things that concern me. You know, right now, we've got kind of a donut, political donut. And the hole is the city of Spokane, which is kind of progressive. The dough is the county, which is a little bit more conservative. And I think that's preventing us from developing regional policies and really advancing as a region. We're still not a significant traffic hub. And that's something that that prevents Spokane from getting capital intensive businesses. And it's that type of business that really raises the median income. It creates capital. We become a service industry. So we pass the money back and forth, and with inflation, we lose two or three percent a year. So those are some of the concerns that I have for the city of Spokane as we look forward to the future.
Well, as you know, I'm part of the fifty-first state movement. I'd like to see eastern Washington become its own state. We'd have our own governor and legislature and U.S. senators. But the city of Spokane is kind of like this little blue pond in the middle of a sea of red. So it's an, it is technically, it has half a million people. Last census, probably ten percent, at least more, maybe five fifty by the time the next one's done. But it's urban county, but it has sort of a rural flavor, I think, that attracts people. If they do a few years at Fairchild, a lot of them come back and sell it. Because it is a good place to raise your family. So it isn't so much east versus west as it is urban versus rural. I think density, maybe they need more laws or more regulations. But if you have forty acres, you don't.
I remember when I was on the first term of my city council, some federal officials came and said that we were one of seventeen areas in the United States that were somewhat isolated and surrounded by smaller rural communities. And that we were going to become a service hub to deal with city and county needs as the populations grew less and less. And the inability of cities and counties to provide hospitals and basic services. And that the more challenged people would be forced to come in to a city like Spokane to get services. And I think we're seeing that really evolve today, where you have outlying communities with people who have either mental issues, problems with addiction, dealing with poverty, saying, you've got to go to where the social services are. And the federal government just funded the Invision Center in Spokane, which is centered on the issue of poverty. And basically, as told eastern Washington, this is where you come for services. And I think that's contributed to this kind of progressive donut hole. But you just can't treat the city of Spokane separate from the region itself. And one of the things that just bothers me as a public official was the fact that in a metropolitan area of less than half a million, we have, what, fourteen fire departments, eight law enforcement agencies. And the bureaucracy of providing basic services is horrific. The other thing that I think politically significant was, even though I supported it initially, our move to the strong mayor former government of the city of Spokane, I think, was just not the right decision at the right time. Typically, you wait till a city gets to about a half a million before you have that type of institutionalization that allows for the leadership and the process that makes a strong mayor former government work. I wish we had stayed with the council management government for a longer period of time. There's really been only one mayor that really understood the leadership obligations of it. That was Jim West. And of course, he had other issues. I think Mayor Condon demonstrated a lot of it. But that transition has not been good for the city of Spokane. That's the other thing. When you talk about the politics of Spokane and the time I've been here, I wish that decision had been postponed until we were a larger metropolitan area.
Well, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about Jim West. I have a friend who's, has worked for the city of Spokane for a long time. He thought Jim West was the best mayor they ever had.
I do, too. Jim and I go back a long way. I had an advertising agency, and he asked me to help him when he was running for, what was the first office? I think it was for sheriff. And I told him he shouldn't do it. We had done an analysis, and he went off and did it anyway. And then he came back when he ran for the legislature, and he got elected. And we worked. And then later, I became head of the Democratic Party. And we continued our friendship. And he, when he got into the Republican leadership, the party wasn't interested in having him work with a quote unquote Democrat. But I remember in the eighties, we had a couple of our clients go bankrupt. And Jim, right in the middle of his campaign, to the consternation of his Republican Party, placed a radio buy with their agency. It was like forty thousand dollars. And the commission was six thousand, which was a lot of money at that time. And he had done it because he had never forgotten how I had helped him in his initial political victory and getting off the ground. And Jim was the type of person that could work with you on things you agreed in and disagree on the things you didn't. And he had developed a very shrewd political acumen. And the tragedy of Jim and what happened in the mayor's office is, to me, like a Shakespearean novel. I remember talking to him one night about what was happening with the episode that, the involvement with the young man. And he kept telling me, he said, well, he's, he was eighteen. And I said, Jim, it's not a question of law, it's a question of what's appropriate. And I, you know, with all his political experience, that surprised me. And I remember him saying, well, I didn't use a computer at the office, I used it at home. And I said, Jim, when you're a public official, it's twenty-four seven. And so part of him was this brilliant, shrewd politician. He, one of the beautiful things about his leadership in the mayor's office was, there were no surprises. He really communicated well. And the city really progressed in street repairs and utilities and that sort of thing. But the other side, this personal side of him was like a child, you know? What did I do? I don't think I did anything wrong. And
Did he ever smile? I saw him a few times in Olympia when he was a state senator, and I just remember it was like, you know, maybe some great horned owl just staring at me.
Well, his life was such a struggle. And, you know, he was in conflict. His sexuality was something that was a conflict. I remember talking to his wife, and they tried to make a marriage work. And, you know, that's a part of the gay life oftentimes that is so torturous, especially during that period, where he was forced to live a double life.
So do you think people were aware of that? But he, it was kind of under that, no one really talked to them?
Yeah, that's where most gay people were during the seventies and the eighties, that it was, there was a guilt that just was at constant fighting with who he was.
But suddenly, he made a misstep, I think, and all kind of-
But he was a very kind, very sensitive person. I never saw him be malicious. I saw him be tough. But I had a lot of respect for him and had a lot of empathy for him.
So we're having elections now, as we speak, and Ben Stucker is running against Nate Woodward. And I'm sure you know both of them. So whoever wins, what would you tell them? What kind of fatherly, village elder advice would you give them?
You know, I'm going to take this beyond the city, to the state, to the federal I'm a Democrat. And probably my closest political working relationship was with Al French, who was the county commissioner. And we were able to agree to agree and agree to disagree. And have the type of respect that we just didn't allow particular incidents or things to carry beyond. We just closed the door on that type of stuff. And I was raised in a political environment where you had the Tafts and the Dirksins and the Phobreites working, where the tip o' nails would drink bourbon and have peanut butter sandwiches with Ronald Reagan, where you would get together and talk. And political parties were designed to train, inform, prepare candidates to help people get elected. But once you got elected, you serve not the party, but the Constitution or the Charter. And I never thought political parties should run government. They were designed to create candidates, to give us choices, and to give us different points of view and perspective. And we've gotten to the point, whether it's City Hall, whether it's the legislature, that parties say to an elected official, once you get elected, your primary obligation is to your party, not to the country or to the state or the city. And I'm not, I'm not being naive to say that political parties don't influence the operation of government. But I'm saying to elected officials, when I got elected to city council or when I served in public office, I said, I've got to serve all the people. I've got to do what's right. And my obligation is to the city or the state first, and the party second. And I don't see that happening in the country. If I look at our president, I sit there and say, you know, respect the office, but if somebody does something wrong, hold them accountable. I don't care whether it's Bill Clinton with an intern. I taught. That type of stuff should not happen. And I don't know why the president says things that aren't true. And so it's a type of thing where I just want people to recognize a higher standard, that when the election is over, you serve the people. And the vitriol that I'm saying in the local campaign-
Well, I have a lot of friends on the left. Even within the party, we've never seen it so divisive, we're going at it, and then suddenly, we talk about it, and then we're back to it. Something's changed.
You know, and it used to be the Democrats arguing with Republicans. Now it's a progressive Democrats with the moderate Democrats, or the super conservatives with the moderate. And I'm sitting there saying, wait a minute, have you forgotten, you've got a party? In the primary, and when you're going through the thing of getting people elected, you've got to serve that party. Sometimes you lose the battle to win the war. And it's kind of like, well, if you don't bat a hundred percent, I'm not going to be on your bandwagon. I said, life is never a hundred percent. My marriage is compromised. We survive on it. And but now compromise seems to be a better, that's a long explanation, but-
But it's getting along with others.
People just need to work together. You know, you and I have different political views. There are a lot of things we agree on. I enjoy your fellowship, I enjoy the camaraderie, I enjoy your intellect. But I can argue on the fifty-first state. Doesn't mean you're bad.
Yeah, it's not like I'm not going to play with you anymore if you disagree.
No, no, no. You're fighting for something you believe in. I admire it. And I understand where you're coming from and why you do it. I just believe that less government is better. Isn't that crazy from a Democrat?
Well, getting back to Spokane a little bit, you know, a lot of people live here because it's not San Jose. So when I was doorbelling last year, my biggest, not request, well, all the arterials are crowded now, you know? And that's, we moved here to get away from this, but it's becoming like these other places. What's the solution?
Live in New York.
Well, I know.
I still joke about, a traffic jam in Spokane is missing your delight. You know, I sit there, I say, you people don't know what traffic. Go to Seattle if you want to see traffic. I'm a city, it has increased and that sort of thing.
Well, I grew up in Seattle, and I left when I was fifteen. And, you know, from five to fifteen. So I saw them build the Space Day, I saw the Summer of Love there in the U District. But I liked it over here a lot better, for a lot of the reasons I think that you've mentioned. So looking forward, I guess, what do you see for Spokane? Do you see-
Oh, I think it's a great place to live, and it will be for the next fifty years. The institutions are- The institutions are strong, and even with the poverty the city is dealing with, we have a working poor that is unlike anywhere I've ever seen, people, they do more with less, there's not the keeping up with the Joneses, you know, despite the campaign rhetoric, I feel safe in this community today, more than I ever did in New York City or Washington DC, and I, you know, it's kind of like this country, sometimes I get so upset that I have to leave it to appreciate it, and I remember coming from New York to Spokane, I sold a home, now this is nineteen seventy dollars, for like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and I came to Spokane and I saw this house, and I said, how much to get in this house, and he said, thirty-six thousand, and I said, oh my God, that's, so you want twenty percent, he says, no, Steve, that's the price of the house, and I've never forgotten that, and...
Yeah, it's still somewhat that way, I think.
Oh, okay, have you...
We need to count our blessings.
My daughter and her husband tried to buy a house in Seattle, and they finally said the heck with it, moved to Spokane, they have three times the house for a third the cost, and he can literally walk to work, whereas the commute in Seattle from Kirkland downtown or wherever they were thinking about living, and I think people just fail to appreciate how good we have it here. I just wish that we had more economic opportunity, again, more capital-intensive businesses. I like Amazon coming, but we don't need fifteen or twenty-dollar jobs, we need sixty to eighty-hour jobs in this city, we need to raise the median income.
Yeah, that's a subject for another...
You need capital-intensive businesses, you need manufacturing.
Well, I went to, when I went back to school, I finished later, but I took Econ 101 and 102, all I cared about was getting Cs, I didn't care about what they were saying, but as I got into politics later, wow, economics is really very, very important, you know, it's kind of like it's a subset of politics or vice versa, like religion, as you might say.
I taught at Gonzaga as an adjunct for thirty-six years in the business school, and the thing that just scared me was the lack of financial understanding, that our students couldn't read a financial statement, just didn't have a good economic background, and, you know, balancing their checkbook, just understanding the basic fundamentals of economics.
We spoke with Sharon Haddock last week about education and Common Core and all that, so we've got to kind of regroup, and, you know, I think we're at a point, hopefully...
Education has to be practical, it has to be meaningful, and more importantly, it has to be empowering. I remember my experience at Stanford was, they told me, we can't teach you the education, the information you need, because ninety percent of it isn't here yet, but we will give you empowerment skills, we'll prepare you for change, they taught me how to take my reading speed from a hundred and fifty words up to seventeen-hundred words a minute, they taught me to write for the I for the year, they taught me about leadership skills, they taught me about, that learning had to be a part of my life, continued learning, not to be afraid of technology and change, and they had people like Kerensky, who had life experiences, that complemented the academic, the theoretical, but they empowered me, they taught me how to communicate, how to have confidence, how to lead, how to work with people, and schools aren't doing that enough, and today, when I was at Stanford, tuition was a thousand dollars a year, today to go to Stanford is seventy thousand. People aren't going to pay that type of money unless they get real-life skills that empower them to be fulfilled and successful, and our schools aren't doing it.
Okay, well, thank you for mentoring our audience out there, you're one of the village elders here in Spokane, so we need to get you on tape and give the benefit of your wisdom and your gray crown to all our listeners out there, so thank you for joining us, Steve, this has been Cut to the Chase, and let's not forget to pray first.
This has been Cut to the Chase with Rob Jace, where we cover anything under the sun that would be of interest to you, our viewers. Cut to the Chase has been brought to you by theinlandnorthwestreport.com, alternative news and opinion for the inland northwest. Don't forget to catch the Sunday edition of Cut to the Chase, where Rob interviews local pastors on Christian perspectives. Until next time, stay in prayer for God, family, and country.